Melanie.
Good evening. So I just wanted to go over a couple reminders related to logistics of this meeting. Just as a reminder, your main controls are on the lower left-hand side of your computer screen. These are your audio and video controls. Please make sure to mute yourself when you're not talking and to keep your video on as we are streaming live to YouTube. With regards to how the board members are going to participate in this meeting, the mayor will be calling on each board member individually to provide their comments and votes. If you would like to speak at any point during the meeting, please make sure to raise your hand. Please be mindful of your background when raising your hands as it might get lost in the background. So just make sure to bring your hand forward. Also, if we are in the middle of a presentation and you're raising your hand but not being called on, please go ahead and feel free to speak up. Lastly, we want to make sure that all board members are able to participate fully in this meeting. So if you experience any technical difficulties, please make sure to text me so that we can suspend the discussion. Next, we need to take the roll call. Please indicate if you are present. Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brendan McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Anne Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlick.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Marie.
Present.
Thank you. All members are present. Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Thanks, Melanie. Appreciate that. At this time, we'd like to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and then followed by a brief moment of silence, if you will, please. We stand. And we'll begin. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Very good. Thanks for the flag. Appreciate that. Back to the screen. There we go. All right, this time, I'd like to ask if there are any changes to the agenda tonight? Seeing no hands, if I could have a motion to adopt the agenda.
A move.
Very good. Roll call vote, please. Commissioner Simpson? Commissioner Westlick?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Maury?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. We're around that corner. So it's accepted. There are no public comments pertaining to the items on the agenda tonight. Is that correct, Town Clerk? Schuler?
That's correct.
Very good. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda is, any changes to the consent agenda? Seeing none on that, can I have a motion, please?
So moved.
The motion to accept the consent agenda. Commissioner Westlick?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem McMillan?
Aye.
Commissioner Maury?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Very good. Thank you. Okay, there is, there isn't anything under recognitions. Presentations, we're up for a website rebuild update by Jenny Buko and from Haven Creative. Jenny, you're on. There you are.
There I am.
Well, we've done the communications team. We'll provide an update on the new website rebuild and included in this overview will be a survey. So that'll be interesting to hear. Jenny, I'm going to turn this all over to you.
All right. Thank you so much. I do need to start and say my internet says it's unstable. So if I cut out, please let me know. Raise your hand. Good evening, town of Waxall, town of Waxall Board of Commissioners, Town Manager. And it is great to be able to provide an update for you on the website. It is a major project that we've been working on since the kickoff of the fiscal year. I'm going to go ahead and share my screen with you and go through some slides. So bear with me one second. All right. Can everyone see that okay?
Yes.
Okay. I'm going to keep it in this view so I can see what's coming next. It just works easier for me in presentation mode. So first off, quick timeline. So Board of Commissioners approved the development of the new website this new fiscal year, and that was in July. So our vendor research began in that July-August timeframe. We did look at several vendors that are known in the municipal website space. So we were looking at them simultaneously. And at the same time in that August timeframe, we started our internal and community-wide surveys to get feedback on what we could improve, really set in a benchmark for what we should do in this new website development. And as you recall, we also did those two-by-two sessions, which each of the commissioners could get their way in as well. And then we did our bid reviews in September, and we selected the vendor in October. And we did go with Granicus, who is really widely known in the website space and was one of the recommendations from the board. So we're really pleased with this vendor selection. So now, in October, we started our tech audit review, and that is really making sure that all the technical pieces that we have in our streaming location are going to work with the new streaming on the new website. So we're really working with IT on that piece of it. But we had our official kickoff on November 6th. So we're really excited to officially get this going. I'm going to go through some of the survey data that we got and then just next steps in timeline to set expectations on the project moving forward. So first was the internal survey. We had 20 respondents. So it was really done by internal staff and, you know, for feedback. Highlights from that really were about how does the website meet your needs. You'll see here somewhat well did win out. So it wasn't drastic feedback there, but it was good to see. We also asked if it took more or less time than you expected to find what you were looking for. And this is a trend we noticed all around. It definitely took a little bit more time for people to find what they were looking for on the site. How easy was it to find what you're looking for for the public? We were actually surprised. The somewhat easy came out over top of the not-so-easy, not-all-easy, but clearly you can see that we need some improvements on where to find information on the site. So we also asked what's the most important usage of the website? Ease of search and function, receiving important town information, obtaining town contacts and records, and uploading meeting minutes and agendas. And so ease of search ranked out in the internal survey. I'm going to jump ahead real quick and I'll show you where it came out on the external survey. Obtaining town contacts and directories was right up there with uploading meeting minutes and agendas. And I want to pause on that because our current website experience, you actually get sent away from our main website into a different website portal where you can access meeting minutes and agendas. And then oftentimes, a user gets lost and can't get back to the main website. So that's something that we're really looking to improve in this new web development piece. So backtracking back a little bit, it's important to note, how much do you trust the information that you find on our website? I was surprised to see that we do have a great deal, a lot, and a moderate amount, which is good, knowing that the information we're putting out is trusted by the citizens looking at it. Again, it takes a lot of time for people to find information they want to find on the site. So this information is available, and we'll put it up live on our website project page. So you can check back and see what the progress is of the site as we're moving along. One of the things that we were noted that works well with the website were the news and events section. So as we know, you can currently sign up on the website and you'll get news and events alerts from the homepage of the site. That's something we're looking to continue to do, but overall improve the brand experience because we'll be able to take information and actually send targeted emails and text alerts. What doesn't work well? Ease of use and finding information on the site. So these are the ranked respondents from that. One thing also, Commissioner had mentioned this in the past, that the mobile site wasn't very mobile, it wasn't very mobile-friendly, which is also something we're looking to improve. And you'll see there that that came up as well in the survey data and that outdated information. I think it's important to note, we have over 200 pages on the current website, many of which are outdated. We were part of the five years ago when we originally redone the site from that time. And there was a lot of historical data that just got moved into the new site. So we're kind of looking to just start fresh with this one and not bring in old data. I want to jump to this slide here because if you're not familiar, this is a net promoter score. And by this one specific question, you can really see our dismal ranking of how bad the site is from the feedback. Detractor means that they would not recommend the site, right? They're not happy with it. Passive, they don't have a lot of input. And then promoter, which is what you would want to see, the number really high is only at two. So it's very clear that people that are using the site overall are not happy with the website. And that was the external survey feedback. Our internal gave a negative 45. I mean, it's not good at all. So website goals, overall, improve user experience of the website in mobile view, reduce the amount of clicks for a user to get to information they are looking for, improve the user experience on that meeting agenda page, like I said, so you can find the meeting minutes and agenda, get to the video you want to see, and get back to the main pages of the site without being sent somewhere else. We also are looking to update the overall design and make sure it's ADA compliant. We've gotten some feedback that some of the text is hard to read and some of the images are dark and the textures in the background make it hard to see the information. So with this ADA compliance, it's going to be fantastic. You can click through at the top of the page and make the fonts larger. You can have some things yellow underlined. So it's really going to help users navigate the site better overall. The contact forms and directories, we'll make those more prominent. So if you want to send in a ticket, report a claim, there's going to be automated workflows that will do that for us and will notify the right person on the backend to make sure we're providing, again, better brand experience, customer experience for our citizens. So project team, what we did is kind of a racy model here. And what that's going to do is ensure that as an entire team, that we're all staying informed and moving the project along as that team. So the responsible members of the team are the ones that are internal to the town staff that are going to help us pull all the information together. This specific team is also on the weekly project check-ins and is really going to be tasked with a lot of the heavy lifting and making sure that they get the proper approvals from their departments and the other teams. So that's our Town Clerk Melody, Directors of Park and Rec, Dina, and of course, IT Nick, and then on the comms team, it's myself and our project manager, Jessica Blackshaw. So on the accountability side, she's responsible for making sure, she says the final, yes, it's good, we're going, and the project goes forward from there. We will certainly keep the department managers and the town manager consulted along the way. As you know, you get your weekly headlines. We will get and keep doing that so that you, as the board, stay informed along the way. And your next website update is going to come in the work session in January. And by that point, we'll have much more to show you at that time. So just to go through kind of the project map, and I want to set the expectation, we all knew that this is going to be roughly an eight-month project. Of course, again, kickoff to happen in November. They said the best-case scenario, it could be five months, worst-case, nine months, but the average is a seven-month timeline from kickoff. So this just shows you that implementation map and where we are. So we just did our kickoff, and this piece here is the discovery package. You'll see under there, there's more surveys. These are more in-depth surveys. They take about two hours to complete, and it's really meant for the internal team to give feedback on design styles and other templates that they have so that we can start narrowing down what type of template we want to work with. There were three different versions that we could have gone with with Granicus. We did go with the middle level, which provides some flexibility in our design, a little bit of customization, but it's not like the complete Mercedes model where we're customizing everything. So we do have to kind of pick some of the templates that they already have to work with. This note here is heat maps and analytics. So what's happening as of right now, Nick has actually reached out to Civic Plus, and they put a tracking code into our current website. It's really cool because what's happening now is as users are coming to our site, we're tracking how they're navigating now and where they're getting their information. It's important because we want to know, we don't want to completely break that user experience if our citizens are used to finding information a certain way. We want to make sure that we're doing that so they can still find what they're looking for, but also, it looks like my internet's unstable, but also improve it along the way. So that's going to give us a nice benchmark to understand where we need to head next. The compiling of the branding materials and images is already underway. We sent everything off just last Friday. Then now we're going to be working on the site map, and that's taking, like I said, those 200 pages that we currently have are going to be all mapped out into a big, massive document. And we're going to say, yes, we want to keep these. No, we don't. Let's eliminate these out and really clean up that site map. We're also going to use the data from the heat map analysis to understand what our header pages are going to look like and what makes sense for the mega menu and other sub child pages on the website. So once all of this piece happens, we jump over to graphic design, and then that's really where the look comes to life. And that, around that time, will be when we get to check in with the board again in January. Of course, like I said, you will keep getting your updates along the way, but the next public kind of input time will be that that stage there. We have the greatest ability to affect change in these first three stages here. But once we get into later in development in the soft launch, it's, the website's pretty much set in stone at that point. So if you have feedback, it's going to have to come in this early stage on. And then once we get to soft launch, it'll give us a chance to launch the site in beta form, make some small tweaks and adjustments. That's when we're going to go through our training. What's really great about this new website project is that everyone on the department will have a point person that can make easier, quicker updates. We currently have that functionality, but it doesn't work well. It's really cumbersome, slow, sluggish, and this is going to take us to a whole nother level, this new backend CMS. So then the last piece is that launch phase. So this is what Granicus calls their Gov Access Website Package, but there's also the Gov Delivery. And the reason I'm pointing this out is because they really are going to work in simultaneous projects. So we have our weekly project check-ins for the website, but we also have the clerks piece, which has weekly project check-ins. And this project roughly is going to take eight to 10 hours of staff time every week in that internal stakeholder team to move this project along. So it is a bunch of heavy hauling, but I think once we get all this initial phase done, we're really going to be happy with the end result that we put the time and effort in. So Gov Service, what's really exciting about this side is that our end user is going to be able to go to the meeting minutes and agendas, and the videos will be streamed directly there. But once the actual meeting is done and someone wants to see the video clip, they can click on that that agenda item and watch the video from from the last meeting. What it's going to do is we'll better reporting, you're going to be able to see what people are interested in, what they're clicking on, and kind of how they're navigating the site. So again, we can go improve the brand experience and customer experience for our residents. So this is the scope of work for that Gov Service side of everything. And these are our point of contacts here, which, again, are the same project website team.
Jenny, I just have, I just have a question. So what you're saying is that when it goes on to, they can click on what topic on the agenda, and that would bring up just that section of the video? Is that what I heard you say? So they don't have to, they don't have to stream through the entire video if there's just one section that they'd like to see?
Exactly, which we haven't had since. Yep.
Wow, that capability is awesome. That'd be great.
Yeah, I think the biggest thing, the reason, like I said, we chose this, were several reasons. The backend, the content management side for the team is going to be so much easier for us to upload, download. I mean, those are the restrictions we have now that it's just so cumbersome, and we're really stuck with the modules that we have. But also, from a communication standpoint, we can automate communications. We can send out regular streams to contact records, and we can see what's being opened. We can report back to the board what's working, what's not working, what things are happening in the community that are getting more attention than others. We can make better informed decisions from that data. And then, like I said, with the meeting minutes and agendas, that's huge as well. So last, next steps is that we set out the next few meetings, which is great because it's a lot of people to wrangle together. And we want to make sure we got them on our calendar. So these are the next ones coming up. The website workflow planning, which is November 18th, then that site map review, and that's a huge one. That's where I said those 200 pages are mapped out, and we're going to have to approve that by December 3rd. The UX, which stands for user experience, that's a consulting workshop the second week of December. We're going to do that once we have that heat map data. Again, that's where we're watching our current users and how they navigate the site so we can make better informed decisions of how we should do the UX moving forward. So then, the next major presentation will be to the Board of Commissioners in the January work session. And that is all I have. Questions?
I have something for you, Jenny. I know there was talks about like the Code Red. Is there some sort of thing that integrates like the Code Red or emergency notifications through on this as well? Or are we going to stay with the Code Red? Or I know there was a different type of alert system we were thinking about.
Yes. So we actually were looking at Everbridge. Well, to back up, yes, Code Red will integrate. And we currently are in contract with Code Red, so we would have to keep that for now. But we are talking with Kevin in Union County to see if they can add a license to their Everbridge so that we can go under their umbrella. We, Kevin and the team, we believe it would be better and better user experience, better record share for us to be under that at some point. But right now, we are going to stay with Code Red. I'm going to go ahead and stop sharing. But we will also have the capability to send out regular communications via text and email, just like we do at the current site.
I have a quick question relative to the number of hours per week that everybody, that you mentioned eight to 10 hours. Is that eight to 10 hours per each participant? Or eight to 10 hours total?
Eight to 10. Well, we all meet together, and then we all have stuff we have to work on. And so they said specifically for the project manager, 10 hours. Melody's probably going to have a lot of heavy lifting. We believe that Dina and Nick would have maybe three to four hours a week. So that's.
Okay. And I agree, we do need to keep moving this, you know, forward, get it done. I'm just, the comment is obviously to town managers to watch that workload.
And I know it's also on the board agenda for us to look at our vision mission, kind of those core values, like the writing of the of the site too. And so right now, we're just beginning phase of the project, getting all the heavy lifting of that going so that we can make sure the content is correct. And then we can look at like design and messaging, and that's kind of, so we're sliding, we're initially, we were going to talk about doing that in November. We're like, we need a little breathing room. Let's work on this piece first and then look at that.
Given what we know already, as we've gone this far, would we do anything differently? Are we, would we do any mid-course adjustments?
With the, with the website now?
In the development of it, have we had any, obviously, the surveys give us a lot of aha moments. And so, you know, is there anything else that we do differently? Or are we still, or are we still in that timeline of discovery?
I would say that the one thing that we learned and discussed was, we don't want junk in and junk out, right? So looking at the current site, we've discussed just starting fresh. We have 200 pages. I think, I think it's going to be way too much time and effort on the staff side to try to clean up what we have. And it would make more sense to just start fresh with what we know we need and make sure it's accurate and that it looks good. I think that was a big misstep when we did the redesign five years ago. We didn't put enough time and effort and attention to that detail when we moved the content over. And so that's why I'm very, very cognizant of that this time around and making sure we have all the key stakeholders inside the organization to make sure we're doing it right this time.
Very good to hear, no doubt. Commissioner Simpson, is he up there?
Um, Jenny, I had to say, I'm excited. I'm so excited to get this rolling and the capability from what I understand that this will be able to do. What's some of the feedback of some of the staff working with them? What are their sort of thoughts?
You know, I think because only a few of us have been through the demos of Granicus. I know Melody's really excited. She could speak to that, to seeing how the meeting minutes and agenda side works. But our internal stakeholder team hasn't gotten to go through all the demos yet, and that is the next step. So I think that we'll get more feedback when we have that that stage.
Cool.
Yeah, it seems like it will be more efficient use of staff's time and also hopefully on the board's end as well. So it'll create a lot more efficiencies for everyone. So we're really excited about what the opportunity it provides.
And on that note, too, we've been, our theme is delegate, eliminate, or automate. Like, what can we get rid of? I know this isn't part of tonight's discussion, but the newsletter went from being that 28-page, you know, digital one to an email now because we're looking like, how can we automate? How can we get information? How can we improve how we're delivering it? We're always looking to do that.
I have to tell you that I thought that the news, the newsletter, because I received that email, I thought it looked great. I thought you guys did a great job on it. I liked the font. I liked the sharpness, the crispness, as well as the content. It was good.
Thank you.
Do the town managers unhooked over there? Jeff?
Yeah, I was just going to follow up on what Anne's question was. For the, for the good handful of employees that, to this point, that have been involved in this internally, you have a bunch of happy, happy staff. So and just following up on the, on the mayor's question, is the internal team, but very much volunteered for this role. And I think they knew what amount of time and effort was going to be needed to pull it off and very eager to do that. Of course, we have people under them and capacity to be able to keep up with our other duties.
That's great. Any other questions, comments, thoughts? I just want to commend both of you guys and the entire team to be able to put this together. And again, Jeff, you give kudos to the internal staff along the way that's working on this that has volunteered to make this happen. This is a team moving forward. I'm really enjoying seeing this. And Jenny, thanks for all your creative mindset and help to get us all the way through this process. It's long. It's, it's involved, complicated. It's almost like, you know, some of the DOT acronyms. We don't understand all of them, but if you could just give them to us, we'll figure that out. UX is a new one for me. So
yeah.
I appreciate that a great deal.
Happy to have it. I'm excited to see it happen as well. Again, I'll make all of our jobs easier. So looking forward to that. Just got to get through this heavy lifting.
The heavy lifting, it's like launching a rocket ship. It's all done up in the front end. So that's great. All right. I appreciate that. Any other questions for Jenny around the board? I don't see any hands up in the background or whatever. So Jenny, you are relieved of duty for the moment.
All right. Thank you all.
Appreciate it. Thank you very much for the input.
Thank you. Bye.
All right. We're going to make this a little bit easier. There are no public hearing items, no old business, no new business, no general public comments. We're going to move down to the town leadership reports. And first up is our town manager, Jeffrey Wells.
Thank you, Mayor. And two things to share this evening. Union County is requesting public comment on their draft 2050 comp plan. They have opened up a four-week comment window on their draft and have four meetings scheduled in different locations and virtually. One of their meetings will be here in Waxall on December 15th in the Police Department Community Room from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. County staff will be available to showcase their plan and answer any questions of the public. The county is seeking this input in advance of their anticipated completion in early 2021. The other meetings are December 2nd, which is a virtual meeting from 7:00 to 8:30 p.m., December 8th at the Union County Ag Center from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m., and then December 14th at Indian Trail Town Hall from 11:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. So again, the meeting in Waxall is December 15th at the Police Department Community, Community Room from, from 5:00 to 7:00 p.m. So we look forward to that. And of course, I know the county has been working on their comp plan for roughly the same period of time that we've been working through our process as well. So we're happy to provide them a spot to seek public comment from people in the western part of the county. Secondly, this will be my first of many reminders about our retreat scheduled in late January, specifically January 28th and 29th. So this is just the, the, if you have topics that you want to make sure you get discussed, just let us know. So it's kind of that, throwing that out there to you. If this is a substantial item, try to let us know by Christmas so that we have time to research and put that item together with any required information that might require some, some research too. So I'll, I'll give you those reminders quite frequently between now and the end of the year as we get closer to retreat time. But as you know, the holidays go by fast, and before you know it, we'll be at the first of the year. Thank you. That's all I have.
Great. Any questions for the town manager? Across the board. Okay, you got to move down to Dina. Dina, you're up to bat again. There you are. Unmute. There you go.
There we go. Sorry about that. All right, everyone. I'm going to give you a heads up on what's going on in Park and Rec with our events programs and our park system. There we go. Awesome. As you know, we have a program guide that goes to December, and this is how you sign up for our wonderful classes and programs. So if you can go to rec desk, and it also is going to transition very well with our new website. So we're excited about that. Thank you very much for approving that. And so, again, we, it's a team effort. So we're excited. Programs that just happened and are coming up. So our first skate night that we're able to, to actually hold, we've been trying to hold it for the last two years. We had wonderful weather. We had wonderful weather last Friday night and was able to be out at the Waxall Skate Park and have a great community builder program. So we gave out safety gear for skaters. Mr. Tom Rizer is an actual cornerstone patron of the skate park. And he made the specialized awards to give out to our participants. And this was a fun event. It wasn't just, you know, how well they did tricks. It was how well they treated their, their, their other participants. So it was a lot of just being a good human on how we were giving out awards. So it was definitely, it's a wonderful way for us to reach our youth and we're very happy to be able to provide that. This coming up, this week, we have glass views with our partnership with Eight Legs with Ms. Jane. So if you'd like to come do that with us on Thursday, please go ahead and sign up. Next week, we have a partnership with our own PD, Community Officers. On Tuesday, we're doing a safety, stranger safety tips with the kids. And they're also doing sculpture with Ms. Kristen at the art box. Fitness is always going on in Waxall. So you got your fitness walk with Ms. Amy. Then we have yoga on Fridays and senior fitness is continuing to go on. Veterans Day, so we have a little bit of a weather system coming in tonight. And so we had to rethink on where the location of Veterans Day is. So we're going to be at Forest Hills Church and that is 8120 Kensington Drive. Same time, same program. Some of it's going to be automated with some video because of just participation. So we would still love for you to join us. Signups are still going on and we do have some capacity at the door as well. Just understand that we do have limited capacity because we're going inside Forest Hill. Masks are required with the governor's orders and the church has its own rules as well. And if you're not able to join us in person, we have an option for you as well. Town of Waxall Facebook page, we will be doing it, streaming it live at 11:00. So please join us there for the event. Drive in movie is supposed to this, this Friday night. Again, weather might play a part if we're going to be able to hold it or not. So everybody cross your fingers. And we will give out information late tomorrow afternoon, early Thursday on the conditions of us being able to hold the movie or not. So look out for that update. But signups are still available. Give you a heads up on events coming your way. So please mark your calendar. November the 21st, we have a partnership with the Ginger Snap 5K race where they're in our downtown and go up Waxall Marvin. And so please adjust your scheduling of going downtown during around 6:00 AM to about 10:00 AM. Cause it's going to be a little busy. But we are working with them on that. Also, on that day, we are having, I'm going to give you a heads up on that in a minute. The, we're having another event that, that day as well. Senior drive through luncheon is on December the 5th, that morning. Starting at 11 ish to, to one o'clock. Sign, sign up is a must. So if you would like to come to that, please check with Ms. Joan and she would love to sign you up. Christmas concert will be at Forest Hills that evening. And we're real excited about that. We've got some dance groups as well. Just going to do some Christmas joy. Downtown Park. So our first public engagement is on Saturday, the 21st at 10:30 at the Community Corner. So we're going to have basically lots of tents set up where you can go around socially distancing to give your input and see some concept plans as well. So we're really excited about that. When I'm coming back to y'all is on our work session on the 23rd. So I'm excited to bring all this information back to y'all. With the public survey, y'all will be receiving it very soon. And then I'll be coming to the public realm for some great in, input from our citizens. And we're excited about the next stage. Community partners. So we all are about finding new, new ways to partner up with our residents and our business owners. The next program guide comes out in January. Love to have you partner up with that program guide. We're also partnered with civic groups on either donations or with park maintenance or projects. I've got lots of Boy Scout projects coming up. So it's one of those things where if you want to make a big difference in Waxall, we would love to have you with us on, on doing that. Phase three of the governor's orders. So we're still in phase three with his, his news conference this afternoon. There's only one big change that was made and that was indoor capacity. So we, all of our signings just staying the same on, and we'll stay in phase three until December the 4th. So we're staying with that. And if y'all have any questions, I would be glad to answer those right now and I'll leave you with our vision and mission.
Any questions from the board?
I just have one. Dina, is there a volunteer component to the Christmas, the senior Christmas drive through event?
Yes, so we, I'm, I'm not sure if you were at the back to school bash. Were you able to come?
I was not, my wife was.
Okay, so um, it's going to be, we're going to be at Waxall Elementary and we're going to set it up very similar how we had that program where they, it was a drive through and we had them loaded up in the bus lot and they come through. But yes, we would need volunteers to help out, to hand out the luncheons. And then we have a special gift for them. We also have looking for volunteers to kind of dress up Christmasy. Cause we usually dress up a little bit when we do the Christmas luncheon, you know, just to be festive. And it's to know that, you know, we haven't forgot about them and they're loved. Cause it's, it's been really hard on this special population. I mean, really, really hard. And we've only been able to do very limited programs. So they just need a little extra care. So we are definitely looking for volunteers.
You'll let me know.
Yes, sir.
Very good. Any other questions from the group? Dana, back to you, if you want to polish it off with your normal closing?
Oh, my normal closing of, thank you, I appreciate you. I'll see you tomorrow.
Exactly right. All right, thank you very much, appreciate that. All right, we'll move down to the next up is presentation or leadership reports from our town engineer and development services director, Matt Hubert. Matt, come on down. Matt went MIA, there he is.
Maybe he's looking for his Christmas outfit to wear for the senior.
Looking for my virtual background, because this clearly is not it. It's a much fancier digs. Good evening, everybody. Just a few quick comments to update you. One, good news on 16 and Gray Byram Signal DOT, the division engineer has, has provided that they are going to take that project back. They will refund the money that we put forward to get it ahead of schedule. They state that they will keep the accelerated schedule. So they are looking to bid it this, this fall, winter, and then construct it in the spring. Those, the details are not, are not ironed out at all, but we did get that feedback earlier last week. So that's, that's good news because then we can take that money and put it in so many other places we know it needs to be. Also, the paving program, we're about half through. Think you'll probably seen at downtown, some of the paving is already in place. Price Street, they're about halfway through, they've done the base work there, but still have to finish the, the surface coating. I expect maybe the rain might push that back a little bit. The widening of McKibben at Millview is yet to, yet to be done. That will likely go into next week. And then I guess I'm obligated to Charlie to mention something about the MTP. One, we were hoping that CSX would have responded by now on, on the tap grant holdup. But we do anticipate that with that crossing improvement, the signalized or the rapid beacon. And now that the MTP is adopted, I'm working with DOT to get a lot, a lot more crosswalks in place at the same time. So we can make a bulk order and we'll see rapidly, hopefully maybe by spring, a lot more safer crosswalks up 16 and 75 for, for the benefit of our walking public. And happy to take any questions you may have.
Great, it's good to hear about the, about the reimbursement.
Absolutely, no, and that's, that's a lot of effort and I thank you, Mayor, for, I think pushing us over the hill. Because we were able to have a good productive meeting and, and we got a quick turnaround in response.
That's great. Well, kudos to you, you've worked on it so long. You're right, once over the goal line, we're looking forward to pushing it over.
Absolutely, I can't wait for that signal to go live for, for, for so many reasons and over so many years. I think Jeff, did you have your hand up?
I did, I just wanted to echo though what was said. I think that the board needs to take a giant kudos for making that decision to front that money. That really made a big difference this time. It really influenced them. So just really thank you, that was, that was a great decision.
Good job, guys. It's, it'll be nice to have another one get on the books as checked off. So that'll be nice. Remind me again on production times, Matt?
Well, again, spring and it's only supposed to be a 60 day contract. So as soon as the construction weather opens next year, 60 days after that, we should have a working signal with turn lanes and hopefully a celebration.
Oh, yes.
I think one more comment. I think it just goes to show as we've talked about, you know, if we're a municipality that is willing to help, help ourselves. I think that really makes a difference with our, some of our organizations with the state, even the county. It really does make a difference.
It does. Great work, nice to see, great progress. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Matt? Across the board as I'm looking over there, Matt, you're off the hook. Charlie, no comment?
I still want to know who's an MTP.
That's awesome. All right, Matt, thank you very much for that. All right, we'll move over just to the board of commissioners, any comments from Mayor Port Town? I see the hand up in my corner up there, Commissioner Simpson, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to acknowledge what a great team of employees and staff that we have in Waxall. And I just want to share something that I had seen written on Facebook by the former president of the Waxall Women's Club. And her name is Melvalie Stewart. And this is what she had posted. It says, "We love Waxar and are sad to be moving to the coast of North Carolina to be near family. We are in a town to finish moving, so things are hectic. As life is never easy, I had a flat tire today on Main Street. My husband was in a U-Haul truck behind me. We eased into the Waxall Women's Club parking lot and started trying to make sense of how to put a spare tire on a car that we're not familiar with. An angel in the form of a Waxar town employee pulled in and just took over. He was amazing. Thank you Jimmy Fowler and your act, and your kind act of helping two seniors in a time of need. Just when you start to question the civility in America, along comes Jimmy. We will miss Waxar and all you wonderful people." And I just want to just acknowledge Jimmy and all the great work that him and everyone on our staff does. Cause I don't think they, I just want to give them the recognition that they deserve.
Well done.
Well done, exactly, well done. And thank him for that, got a full round all the way around. Jeff, we need to, we need to find out if there's like a candy bar of the month or something for that. So maybe we can start to give those out because I'm hearing more and more of those stories relative to the people that work with us here in the town. So kudos to the entire team for helping themselves develop such a great workplace for us right now. So again, thanks to everybody, appreciate that.
Thank you for sharing that, Ann. Yeah, it is, it's an awesome story.
Yeah, it's just wonderful and it just, it makes me so honored and proud to be kind of part of that team that we have here in Waxar. It's, it's awesome.
That's a great one. Thanks, Ann. All right, any other hands up, any comments from any of the board members? I have a quick comment, just a reminder again, Jeff may have said a little bit about this earlier, but we're starting to warm up town halls. Again, town halls being the Q and A sessions. Since COVID, we haven't been able to get out very much to communicate with the people in our communities. And so we started looking at bringing us to them in their communities. And it happens that because of size and COVID and restrictions on the amount of people, we are going to be able to use the facilities again at Forest Hills. And this first one will be for the community of Millbridge. And they will be able to come in on Tuesday, November 17th from 6:30 to 8:00. I know that's not my normal two hours, but it's a Q and A with me and, and Jeff will be there as well. So again, I want to make sure anybody who's watching this that can see it and remind themselves in that community that we will be available for a Q and A. I think, I think there is available up to 100, Jeff, is that what I remember hearing?
That's correct. And it's, it's Tuesday, November 17th.
Seventeen, okay, sorry about that, thanks. And we're going to be doing this more often. We're going to do each one of the master plan communities around us at larger communities and then invite everybody else in the town. Again, venue is always the issue, but I just got a notification today from Pastor Ralph over at Five Stones that he is open to having us use his facility as often as we'd like to do it. So be again, two good meeting places that we have to get large groups of people. And we could certainly, you know, with our halls, we can certainly hit that 100 person limit very easily. But we'll still be safe with our social distancing. So we're looking forward to that. And again, that is Tuesday, November 17th, 6:30 to 8:30. And the first one will be at Forest Hills for Millbridge. Right, with that, since you're all excited to listen to me talk for two hours again, I know you're all looking at your watches. Don't laugh too hard now. Anyway, nothing against, nothing up for a closed session. And so I look for a motion to adjourn. All right, we'll go around Rob and Commissioner McMillan.
Aye.
Commissioner Westlick?
Aye.
Commissioner Simpson?
Aye.
Ms. Moray?
Aye.
All right, we're done for the night. Thanks, everybody, we're moving along really well. Thank you for everybody's input. Charlie, good night.
Good night and be safe, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Bye bye.